Not seeing. We have not seen accountability in the past. The world is changing. We no longer get to sweep things under the carpet. So I would like a city manager that is willing to face the reality that sometimes ugly realities and deal with them. Thank you.
Jerry. Think I need to.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Yes, I'm very concerned about CARP implementation on the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. And I would like the city manager to be well versed in how in the aspiration and goals of CARP and have ideas on how to bring our entire community ahead. Be particularly aware of the justice provisions, environmental justice provisions of it. And get us moving to protect our community and be an example to other communities around so we can move the whole region. In this effort. Thank you. I'm going to change my name because Julie is not with me. Thank you.
Well, I'll remember that. Who's next? So I just received a chat that says we need to acknowledge our problematic history in Evanston of ignoring and enabling anti-black racism and the racist actions taken by our previous two city managers. I am looking for a process that will implement a racial equity assessment tool. And we have heard that in other conversations and we are talking at CPS. DEI is incredibly important to us. We actually had a DEI program that we use with our clients. And we are looking for a good assessment tool to use for this process. Rick Marsh.
Hi, how are you? You know, part of your question was, you know, one of the challenges that a new city manager will face. I mean, we're, the city manager is certainly responsible for ensuring a healthy, dynamic, adjust, and fully engage in transparent city government. The issue that we have at hand is that a lot of trust has been lost. So the city manager has to come in and kind of balance that and kind of regain that trust with the community. And that is going to be a significant challenge, I think, for the next city manager. Of coming in and developing that relationship, you know, with the community. That's what I have for now.
Thank you. We got a suggestion that there is a Govert Alliance on RACIN that does exactly that. So we'll take a look at that. We appreciate that. Greatly appreciate that information. Any other questions or comments that people would like to make about the challenges and opportunities that the next city manager is going to face? Those are sometimes things we really want to share with them so they understand frankly what they're getting into. And it's also good for us to know those things because we want to ask people if those are the types of challenges they've faced and what they've done about them. So if there are other comments on that, we'd love to hear your feedback. The chat is being recorded today. Rosie, who are next? Oh, we need to unmute you.
Okay. This may sound a little alarmist, but in what's happening in our country in terms of the divide between people and the right wing points of view and more violent expressions of people's interests in this country, I am concerned to a certain extent about violence that maybe, you know, going to occur in this country over the next couple of years. And I think of Evanston as kind of a safe haven for me because mostly the people that I come in contact with have kind of the same kind of open liberal, more progressive views like I do. But that's not true across the country. And I don't know how much, you know, we're going to be able to protect the way we want to live here in Evanston in light of what's happening across the country. So I just would like to have a city manager who's aware of what's going on nationally and think about how we are going to kind of keep ourselves a safe haven.
We did just receive a chat that says an opportunity for the city manager is to build trust through community collaboration with residents and organizations, which of course, this is also a challenge. So one of those things is we talk about that sometimes what's a strength is a weakness. Challenges and opportunities can be the same thing. We just received a message from someone feeling that respectfully Evanston is not a safe haven or a violence free haven for many African Americans. We want somebody who is strong with change management. There's an infrastructure right now that's driving people out of town. Do we have any speakers? Diane Goldbrink.
Hi, thanks. One of the city manager's primary responsibility obviously is to oversee the budget. And that has been a document that has been very contentious over the years. So one of the primary opportunities, I suppose, is to kind of reevaluate the budget and ensure that it reflects our community's values. You know, that's, you know, community's values is very broad. I think we always tend to think that we are sort of one. We in Evanston think that we're one community with progressive values, but I think that means a lot of different things to different people. So it's going to be about, you know, it's going to be a huge challenge. It's always a huge challenge to manage it and make sure that our budget that we are spending, that we're, you know, keeping people here that have been moving out, you know, we've been, we've lost a lot of our lower and middle income residents over time because it's just become so expensive to live here. So making sure that we address that issue.
Thank you. Mary Rosensky.
Hi, thank you. I agree with what Diane said because we do have such a variety of opinions and very little clarity on common definitions of these. But I also would love us not to be appointing a lot of new people to the city until and let that new manager decide who her team is going to be because I think that's going to be very important. I would like the city manager to be someone who is not already in the city of Evanston or you know, part of the existing issue because I think we need really fresh eyes with, as Diane said, change management ability and ability to really have a strong financial background in municipal government contracts and those issues as opposed to turning it all over to other staff. We need a city manager who's going to ask lots of questions and really be brutally honest with our council as to how to rein in our spending and keep us on track financially to meet our goals while meeting the needs of the broad spectrum. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Leslie Williams.
I think to follow up with what Mary was saying. You know, I think there's also not always agreement on what it means to truly get public input and to actually value and use public input. We have a lot of commissions and committees, but the process for getting on those commissions and committees is, has often been opaque. There's often been a feeling that it was people who knew people who knew people that were put in place on those committees and commissions that staff had a lot of input as to who was allowed to be on the committees or commissions that were overseeing their work and thus that these committees and commissions were not perhaps truly responsive to the public needs as much as they were responsive to the staff desires. And I think there's also concerns about, you know, sort of the balance of power between the council and the staff that sometimes it feels as though the council is simply rubber stamping things that staff have suggested without there being a full public inquiry and analysis and maybe pushback on some decisions that staff have been pushing for.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this subject, the challenges and opportunities for the next city manager?
I've been making comments in the chat because I'm not able to talk right now. So I I'm multitasking. So I don't know if you've addressed any of my concerns in the chat. If you could, please. Thank you.
And so I talked about the last change management. These are all, the chat is also being recorded so that we will have these saved afterwards. There is, the next chat was, I certainly hope that we will defer any hiring until the permanent city manager and HR director have been hired. It would be reckless to hire the proposed 49 plus new employees under interims. Also, this will have long-term serious, some serious consequences, pardon me, for both the operations of the city and for taxpayers. Thank you very much. Rick Marsh.
Okay. All right. So the other part of your question, question was about opportunities. And, you know, what are the opportunities for a new city manager here? City manager has an unbelievable opportunity of kind of bringing this all together. Obviously, it won't be easy, but this is a vibrant and dynamic, you know, community, you know. I've lived here for 37 years. I'm not from here. And this is a beautiful community. So I mentioned earlier about trust as being an issue. And so certainly that person has to come in and bring in and bring our community and our city government better connected. And I also believe that to pay that community effort and connect in. I mean, that, I mean, a great opportunity to kind of bring the whole political side of this. The, you know, the relationship with the community side of it in a wonderful community that could be better for all. And right now is not. So that's the opportunity that someone has in coming in, kind of bridging that and bringing that together.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Any other comments about this question? What are the challenges and opportunities for the next city manager? Well, it looks like we have. Mary Rosensky.
Hi, thank you. Will there be another town hall? Because I just saw this late last night. And I think, you know, there's with everyone with different schedules. I think this is a great opportunity for discourse and I would hope that we can do like two or three of these at different times. Like I'm actually driving to work right now. But I'm sure there's other people at soccer games and all this that would like to be, have their opinions heard too. So is there a time scheduled to have other other town halls?
There is not a time currently scheduled, but we could certainly do that and can touch base with the mayor and the council about if they would like us to schedule additional sessions. There is a online survey. The link is on the city's webpage that you can access as well. I mentioned at the beginning that as of this morning, we already have 820 responses. So very good feedback for that. It is in English and Spanish as well. There are two different versions. But we will certainly touch base with the city council that some individuals have asked for an additional session. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Well, I'm going to turn it back over to Dave to talk about our next question.
Great. Thank you, Pam, and some great feedback. So thank you. The next question we'd like some feedback on is what attributes must the next city manager bring to be successful in Evanston?
Dave is a city manager. Can you provide, what are some of the things that you think a city manager needs to be successful?
Sure. You know, especially in a community like Evanston, being a good facilitator, someone who can deal with conflict resolution, long-term planning, economic development. I think good customer service skills. Those are, those are a few things that certainly any manager should have in their toolbox. But there may be others that we, you know, we should consider.
Thank you. Who would like to go first? Leslie Williams, please.
So this is really more of a question for David. How are you defining customer?
A customer in my mind is anyone that the city interacts with, and that can be residents, businesses, other communities, vendors, really anyone that I think that there's, there's some type of service provided to.
So I guess my, I guess follow up to that is I don't think that those groups should all be valued or prioritized equally, you know, particularly if you're talking about businesses and vendors. And using the word customers to me is somewhat off putting because it makes it seem like this is a transactional retail relationship. Whereas a city manager is in service to the elected, is in service to the people of Evanston. You know, it's not a corporate or a business or a capitalistic kind of relationship.
Yeah, yeah. No, and I think, you know, it's a terminology. I think there was in the chat box stakeholders, customers. I think the point is that is we're a service industry and the residents certainly are the most important, but I point to, point well taken.
We do have a chat that talks about a good listener, someone willing to hear voices and acknowledge the needs of all residents, but especially those most marginalized. Oliver Ruff.
Thank you, Pam. You alluded to it. I think one of the issues that the city manager must have is to be open and honest, someone who is not only willing to listen, but who's not a manipulator. We've had past experience where there appears to be city managers who've been very manipulative. They will say one thing to us and another thing to somebody else, and that's what separates the trust. So we need someone, not only this open and honest, who's accountable, who's willing to be visible, somebody who's going to bring some characteristics as Rick suggested or mentioned earlier and several other persons, that are going to bring the community together. Because there's a divide now that is not a very good feeling for the Evanston community. Some good things are going on, but there's a divide that must be a bridge before we lose the concept of the Evanston that we feel that we've had for so many years. Thank you.
So I'd be interested, Oliver, in your take on what do you think Evanston has been for all that time? What are some of those important characteristics of Evanston?
For previous, well, we've had a community where, and Evanston, I must say, is not a community that I would denounce in a way that said it hasn't been good. Evanston is a good community. There are a lot of things that need, need to be improved upon. And so you were asking for some of the characteristics of Evanston has provided thus far. Evanston has been a community of livability in many ways. But I think that financially, as many people have alluded to, tax-wise and affordability, it has created some disharmony for the marginalized to the extent that, you know, you can't afford to live in Evanston because of the taxes and because of the the current expenses of the home. There are also some, still some racial behaviors or racial overtones that, you know, prevent compatibility, prevent livability. And these are some things that the city manager is going to have to bring with him or her that's going to help bridge those situations that have become more apparent seemingly. And I think if that person is progressive and willing to get out and get with the community to find out what the issues are and to try to bring the issues in into the city council so that they can be understood and they can be voted upon, that's going to be relevant and applicable to the community in an effective way. So I think if that, if we can get to that point, I think that, you know, there would be a greater trust and a greater a greater concern where we can feel more comfortable and living together and without having the hostility that seems to be coming forward at this point.
Thank you. Mary Rosensky is next.
Following up on Oliver, I think that honesty and community trust is critical. And I think part of the trust in the city has been eroded because of decisions that were not presented openly and transparent. So I would hope that the new city manager recognizes that the entire culture of the city and how they relate with the residents starts with him or her. And that's when you walk into the city. I mean, I will tell you, I had a very bad experience with the city staff person after one of the city council meetings and it wasn't directed towards me. But she just said, you know, it's unfortunate because so many of these people come to the city council meetings have nothing better to do. And I found that incredibly, incredibly wrong kind of statement coming from this person. And that's, that attitude is a little bit prevalent and has been said. So I would hope that our new city manager really takes a stance that every resident is important and everything is presented with both the pros and the cons. To me, that is so critical, accurate information. I know up in Highland Park, sometimes when they're doing zoning, staff presents both the pros and the cons in their situations. This is what the story is. This is what's allowed. And this is what these people are asking for. And I would like to see that in our decisions. Because we don't seem to recognize that we have rules for everybody and they should be applied equally. So I have a, that's what I would like the city manager to just go, guys, we're going to pull us together. Everyone goes by the same rules. And we're going to tell both sides of the story and get all the information out and not have quite so much secrecy in some of the huge financial decisions that go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? We're Diane Goldbrink.
Hi, thanks. I'm just following up on what Oliver and Mary said, like echoing what they said. It's just a bias towards openness, really, like the feeling sometimes as Mary and Oliver said, that some of these decisions are made behind closed doors and that staff knows better than the residents what the residents need or want. So there is, there should, the city manager should fully recognize that he or she reports to city council who reports to the people of Evanston. So ultimately, city staff works for the people of Evanston. And so the bias should be more information and there should be a good reason. If something has to be kept confidential, there needs to be a really, really good reason for it as opposed to the bias towards confidentiality. And we'll just tell you, you know, what you need to, what we think you need to know. That will really help with the trust aspect. And this is pretty much what Oliver and Mary just said, but I'm just agreeing with them.
We had a chat that also indicated they 100% agreed with Mr. Ruff. Does anyone else want to make a comment about the attributes that you'd like to see in the next city manager? Leslie Williams.
First of all, I really hope that some other people that haven't spoken will feel empowered to speak because, you know, I I really don't think this is a great conversation if there's only four of us talking. But this may seem kind of obvious, but a lot of hiring processes will talk about the importance of racial equity and having an anti-racist orientation. But that's not actually something that is part of the job description, part of the interview questions, part of the experience that you're looking for. And I think in the same way that we're looking for somebody that has strong financial experience and strong experience in working with municipalities and those other qualifications, how does this person deal with diversity? How in their life and their experience have they worked with different ethnic groups? How have they prioritized the needs of marginalized people? What experience do they have looking at the disparate impact that certain policies will have on marginalized people? And so that shouldn't be theoretical. That should be something that is actually in this person's experience and in their toolkit.
And I would add that we are exploring those things in our screening interviews, in the questions that we suggest councils ask. It's very important to us here at CPS HR that we do explore those things. And I think our numbers speak for themselves and that ensuring that pools bring individuals in that way and on, just on a diversity spectrum, over the last three years, 51% of our placements have been either female, people of color, or both.
Well, female is not really the same thing as valueizing marginalized ethnic groups. And also when you say people of color, we would really want to know what their, frankly, what their experience is with African Americans and having a specifically anti-racist orientation, which is very different than simply diversity.
Well, and we consider that to be the equity. So point well taken. Some of the chats, appears there has been little in the way of checks and balances over the years among upper management with regard to spending. Our city needs a city manager with a strong background in finances and budget who understands, my cursor is not, how our high taxes have changed the makeup of our city significantly and who is committed to ensuring that we spend tax dollars appropriately and in line with stated priorities. Thank you. Are there any additional comments? Sarah Vander Wicken.
Hi, I'm sorry. I came in just, just a few, couple of minutes ago. So I have missed a lot of the conversation, but But I I think, I I think Evanston is something of a tale of two cities. And I think it would be important for a city manager coming in to understand that and that that's unacceptable. And 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 what what the nature of that is and and to understand kind of the history of how that developed. And to be creative in thinking how, thinking out with other people, what is necessary to change that? And, you know, that that has to do, obviously, with an equity framework. It has to do with commitment to affordable housing, you know, access to all sorts of things. And that, that, I I do think and agree that that should be kind of on the top, you know, of a framework of what what needs to be done and how to, how to think about the various issues that come up in in relation to that to that concept.
Thank you. I, there's a question in the chat. Is there a draft job description or posting for your broadcast? Can you wait until surveys and forums with residents? So there is a draft job description with the council. We are planning on going live next week. We didn't have, as we mentioned, this was the town hall that was planned. We've had a couple of you ask for additional forums. But we have, we were in Evanston two weeks ago and met with staff, met with many community stakeholders, nonprofit groups, et cetera. David has had another 30 to 40 calls this week. And so we have had a tremendous amount of feedback. And as I mentioned earlier, the online survey has already noted that there are, we have 820 respondents. And so and the other thing about the job posting is that much of the information that we gather in these forums is not all of it is used in the job description or posting. Some of it, much of it is used for our edification when we're looking for candidates. Again, when we are coming up with the correct screening interview questions to talk to these individuals, to suggest questions to the council. As I mentioned, this is being recorded, so the entire council will have opportunity to see everyone's feedback. So that's, that's where we are in the process at this point. And Ms. Price, you had mentioned, you had put that chat in and you're next to speak as well. Ms. Price, are you there? We did just get a chat, if a potential candidate is not from Evanston, they need to be willing to learn and consider historical implications during decision-making processes. Thank you.
Yes, sorry, I was not mute, I was still muted.
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay, this is, this had, this meeting right now, I was reluctant and hesitant and I was so glad other people were able to cut through some of the issues I had. And the issue I had is it felt top down. What you described is, in answer to my question, is also top down. We've already done this, we've already heard what we need to hear, and you're hearing that we need to have more people involved. The selection process, you've already been told by a really great speaker that it tends to be geared toward people who are are known. In terms of the of the big groups, it's always been about the big groups and not the disenfranchised or the vulnerable. We've had exclusion going on that I don't think Tinley Park has experienced. And with regard to management speak, I have an MBA. And management speak is not how you address or communicate with residents. So we need someone who has very, is a very human person and has compassion and integrity, which is everyone talking about, and trust, and the ability to integrate information. Integration is different and and organic as opposed to silos. We have silos and people are divided on the basis of those silos as well. So the organizational structure, if you want to use technical stuff, is not very good in Evanston. And we need a manager to re- reimagine and revision, re-envision something that Tinley Park never had to face. So we, we have people leading the discussion who don't understand this sort of thing as clearly as the residents do. And I'm not saying that negative, that's just the honesty part. And that's what other people have been saying. And I'm being a little bit more blunt, but also with an MBA, I also know direct is better sometimes. And I think that this whole process has to be amended according to resident needs and not necessarily top down, which excludes the people they need to hear from. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a chat. Are we going to be sharing the comments and suggestions made today with the community as well as comments from the surveys? Certainly, we will be putting together reports for the council. And we have to stress that I, well, I understand everyone's feelings. The reality is, is that the council is our client, and so we have to work in their direction. But we share all of the information with them. So if this information is to be shared publicly, that will be up to the council. So we appreciate all of your comments. But it's not up to us whether this information is shared. We have a comment, the manager's job should reflect the overall goals of the city. The manager should ensure that the project can be tied back to the specific goals of the city. The manager should prioritize projects and share this info with the people. Who would like to go next? Well, if there are no other comments, we could move on to the next question. Oh, Jean Labera has a comment.
Okay, sorry, using my sister's account here. This is actually Bob Aaronson, resident of Evanston. I missed the very beginning of the meeting and might have covered this. But I do want the city manager, someone who will, who can do the math, is very oriented on, you know, evidence-based studies, if they want to follow studies and results. You know, you know, is enthusiastic for peer review of past practices other cities have done to achieve certain things. I don't want someone who just relies on, oh, I just believe this to be true, and then they do that for the decisions. Because, you know, we want to do what what has worked in the past. I know you're looking for people with city experience, so that's probably what you are looking for. But I'm very much into the whole, you know, let's follow the science and, you know, adjust based on what the evidence shows afterwards. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, I will turn it over to Dave to go to our next question.
Great, thank you, Pam. So the last question we'd like you to help us with is, what are the special things about Evanston that make it a desirable place to be a city manager? And this can be things about the community, the residents, way of life, those type of things. That's where we'd like to get some feedback from you.
And for those of you who may have joined us preview, later than our introduction, if you just go down to the reactions button and raise your hand, we'll be happy to call on you so that you may speak. Dave, why do you think it's important for us to know what are the great things about this position for people?
Sure. Well, you know, our goal is is to attract a lot of very good quality candidates. And so one of the things that we want to do is make sure that that candidate feels like Evanston is also a good choice for them. So we want to be able to to sell the community, and there's tremendous attributes with Evanston, many of them that are are very obvious. The location, the lakefront, university, the downtown. But there may be some things that, as residents, that that we should be aware of that can also help us sell the community and sell the the position to 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 good candidates.
We just had a comment that residents want to be involved and included in decision-making. Sarah Vanderwicken, please.
I would say that one of the benefits is that Evanston has a lot of the same problems that other municipalities have. It's a real city, it's got, you know, complicated issues and so on. But it's also positioned based on the, the energy and the, and the involvement of citizens and and eagerness to help the city do better. That to potentially really deal in creative and effective ways with some of those problems that many other municipalities may just be so underwater or so beset that they're, they're not going to be able to kind of get on top of. So it's, it's a, it's kind of a rich opportunity to really try and tackle and 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 deal well with some things that are problems everywhere.
Thank you. Jenny, you're next.
Yeah, I think this is following on the first two comments. I mean, we definitely, we have so many people with so much knowledge and so much willingness to share it and and wanting to be involved. But the way that this information is gathered and used tends to disappoint me. I mean, the only, the only thing that makes any sense to me is, is that to have a city manager that uses convergent facilitation. Because I, that's the only thing I'm aware of that makes sense to me that would work. Because, because I don't see it, I don't see all this energy being used. And and so there's that piece. And then the second piece is that we, we, we do have a, what I see, I don't have a comparison, but a very strong interest in true racial equity and a lot of people really involved. And I have not seen that from the city so, so far. I've certainly heard people talk about it today, and I would love to see the city get on board with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? So one of the things we're, as Dave mentioned, one of the things we're trying to ascertain is that if there are only problems, why does someone want to come be the city manager? So it has to be a fit for both of, both the residents and the council and for the person coming to take this job. And so that's why we're, we want to be able to sell that there are some really great things about why you want to come here. There are problems and there are things that people want addressed. But there had, I'm sure that there are some other things that you think make this a really attractive job for the next city manager. That's great, Jenny, lots of people really care about Evanston. Doreen Price.
Yes, in terms of I mean, everybody uses their own experiences in terms of whenever they've had chances to lead, and we have many residents who are extremely good at that, as you know from the speakers. And I would just like to see someone and advocates too. We go through challenges because we're, we're dedicated to what it is we want to do better or change in the government. And it's not a bunch of complainers, which is how people are disparaged and should not be. And in terms of what needs to be done, we need a city manager who says, yes, I can do this, and this is a good thing because from, I can synergize or I can collaborate or whatever with people who are different than me. And acknowledging and and that is is something all of us advocates do because no one can live in someone else's shoes. So that's why grassroots is really important. And grassroots, I don't think, is what the goal has been. And so asking the city council, and this is with all due respect, to understand this, when their process shows that they don't, means that they need to understand better before they go forward with a city manager selection search or define what that is. And that's my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you. That was well put. Oliver Ruff.
Thank you again. I I just think that some of these comments have been made that possibly will incorporate some of the things I'm going to say. The new city manager needs to be one, hopefully, who is not only, who not only has a commitment and dedication to the city of Evanston, but one who's not going to be allowed to use this as a stepping stone for him or her to move to other opportunities. We want someone who's willing to be in this community to improve the community in a progressive way, not to just be here for a period of time and get a sufficient buyout to move on. And we've had too many buyouts from city managers that is bothersome to me. And I think that, you know, I don't know what the negotiation process may be for individuals if they decide to leave or have to leave. But I think that there should be something within the contract. And this is possibly not within your purview, but something within the contract that does not permit them to have these enormous buyouts that rip our, our, our tax base. Because, you know, the monies are coming from, from the residents. So we need to get somebody who's willing to be in the community, who has a dedication to the community, who's not going to just use this as a stepping stone for his or her future opportunities. I guess that's what I want to emphasize. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment from Ms. Shander. Active community, people want to move back to Evanston and raise their families. With the right engagement, our community will support the right initiatives in big ways. Any additional comments? Well, Dave and I want to thank you for participating this morning. If there are no additional comments, I would encourage you. Oh, we have another chat. Evanston is a safe and walkable city. It is well situated between the city of Chicago and other suburban areas. It has wonderful historic areas which need to be protected but blended with new technology and ideas. The manager should think this is great. That's, thank you. The manager should think this is great. That's, thank you. Mr. Ruff?
Uh, Pam, I'd just like to first thank you and David for this opportunity. I think it's been a very fruitful opportunity for questions and interactions to occur. I would have liked, as Leslie pointed out earlier, to have other persons who are on the call, if they have concerns, to share them now and not share them later in, in an open means for us. However, I just, again, would like to re-echo the opportunity to have another town hall meeting, whether it's one or two, but I think we need to have at least one or two additional ones so that other persons who may not have been able to attend this time can attend a subsequent time. But I thank you both for this opportunity.
Thank you. So I'm going to put Dave and I's email in the chat right now and leave that up for a few minutes so that they're available to everyone. So because it would be great for us to hear, and there's no slash before mine, what times people think that that would be good. Saturday morning, we thought that Saturday morning might be a, a very applicable time for people. But I understand if people might want one in the evening, et cetera. And certainly, if there are individuals on the call today that didn't feel comfortable sharing their opinions, please feel free to email us and share those opinions. We're happy to hear from you. In addition, we're happy to speak with you. And so if you email us and say you'd like to have a call, we're happy to schedule that. I would reiterate that there is a online survey on the web. If you go to the city's webpage, you can find the link to that. And it does offer opportunity for you to just, for narrative, for other comments about things that we haven't asked questions about, that you'd like to address. And so there's that opportunity as well. Residents with young children may need a later time in the day to join. And yes, I, I was thinking that probably if we do another one, it would be in the evening sometime, that that might be easier for people. Says my, our emails have not appeared. If you go up to nine, at nine thirty-one, is when I put those in, I'll do them again. I believe our contact information is also on the city's website. If not, I will ask them to place that there as well, so that people have our contact information. So I just put in our emails again. Diane, do you have something to add?
All right, I just wanted to say one more thing. The, the people that spoke today are the people that we all speak often at city council. And sometimes we hear that other people feel intimidated to speak at city council because they're kind of worried that they have different opinions than we have. So I'm just wanted to say I hope that other people on this call who have different opinions than some of the people who spoke, who may have had very positive interactions with the city and city manager, feel empowered to speak. We want, you know, everybody, we, we want to hear everybody's opinions, or I'm sure you do, and that they don't feel like they need to just email you privately. So I just wanted to sort of reiterate that invitation. I mean, we want to hear, I'm sure you want to hear from everybody.
Yes, we want everyone to share, and as I mentioned, we've already spoken with many people. We did spend three days in the city and meeting people in groups in person. And Dave, I want to say, Dave, how many calls did you do last week?
I did, I've done about thirty, yes. Some really great, very passionate people with a lot, a lot of great feedback that's going to help us a lot.
Yes. Okay, was everyone able to get our email addresses? It did finally show up. I realized it was my fault that I hadn't clicked the everyone, so my apologies for that. Again, we'll make sure that the city has our contact information up on the webpage as well. I'd encourage you to go there to fill in the online survey if you'd like. But thank you again for joining us this morning. We really appreciate your commitment to the city and to finding the next city manager. And we will talk to, how did we choose who the thirty people were we called? We were given a list from the council that the council was at, the mayor asked the council to add groups and individuals to that list. And so it was about seventy-five to eighty people long. And we've made every attempt for that group of individuals and to contact them, to schedule them for conversations. But again, that's why we're doing the online survey. And the town hall meeting is to try and meet, 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 reach as many people as would like to participate. Okay. Well, if there are no other comments, again, thank you so much for taking the time. We've enjoyed speaking with you today, this morning. And certainly I would keep, the city does have a page dedicated to the city manager search, where you can find ongoing information. And if another town hall is scheduled, there would be, there would be a link there. So, but I believe that they are so, also sending it out, that the public information team is sending it out to groups of individuals that typically receive probably agendas, et cetera. I'm not sure where else they may be placing the ad, but you can certainly find that information and share the link if we do another meeting. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Leslie would be interested in the breakdown of which wards the thirty lived in. As I said, it's, so it was a much, a list much longer than that. Some of them were nonprofit groups, et cetera. So, um, every council member was asked to contribute and everyone that they suggested. So it was up to your council members who they indicated they wanted us to contact from their wards. But, so really, I think it would be best for you to check with your council member and indicate that, you know, you'd like to hear that information, et cetera. Well, again, thank you so much, and everyone enjoy the rest of your weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.